Nine oh five paragraph D, the administration will conduct a presentation of the proposed annual financial budget. There is no action necessary. This is a hearing. One day.
As you know, it's July and we have to adopt our budget for this fiscal year, which is fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. It began on July first. We had a proposed meeting last month, a budget proposal, where we get our calculations and came up with our budget. And after that happened, the last week in June, the legislature made some additional funds available to schools and they also, for the first time, made the decision that we could increase our adopted budget over our proposed budget, which had never been allowed before, but the legislature allocated additional funds. The biggest increase was the base support level went up significantly. They took away the teacher experience index, which is the longer a teacher has been teaching, they tend to be at the higher end of the salary schedule. So they give you a small amount of money, which AHO just qualified for last May. It was a small amount, but they took that away and they also took away the additional teacher compensation that has been in the budget forever. And the other thing that really helped us is they increased the weighted student count for some of the Group B students, which are visually impaired, hearing impaired, other special needs. And so we have an increase in ADM and an increase in the base support level. And so when all is said and done, it increased our MNO budget, the adopted over the proposed by one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Actually.
And they also increased the district additional assistance amount, a small amount in the textbook and in the actual funding amount. So that increased our capital budget by twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars between our proposed and our adopted. And like I said, this is the first time we've been allowed to increase that. I also want to say another piece of good news is that it did not increase our tax rate because we already filled our qualified tax rate levy. So these funds will come from state funds.
Okay.
This is a, this is great budget to do.
Is there any questions about?
No.
I don't.
Okay. And it's not a voting issue, it's just an information issue?
Yes, it is. And just so people know, I increased that additional spending in the MNO budget into what the state classifies as classroom dollars.
Okay.
Mostly to the classroom, some support services.
Okay.
Of course, we'll change it as we need. If it's December, that's where we put the extra.
Okay.
Extra funds.
Okay. If there are no more questions, then we need a motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan? Aye. Pass three to zero.
Okay. And now we go into the regular meeting and I believe we need to take roll again.
Ready?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Cruz is absent. Ms. Duncan, aye, here. Mr. Guthrie is absent. Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Dr. Saltero?
Here.
Dr. Shebold?
Here.
And Ms. Smith?
Here.
Okay. And we've already, once again, appointed the acting clerk and I will make the motion that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second it. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan is aye. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Okay. Please stand and join Mr. Perkins.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we open the Florida visitors' comments. Unless Angelina has a comment. And you're not really a visitor. You belong. Okay. So the first, next item then is the governing board report on current events. Does anybody on the governing board have anything to report? Okay, then. Then the next item is the superintendent's report on current events.
Mr. President, I do have, I will be as brief as possible, but I do want to share some information with you. And I thought I would wait till the meeting to pass out some important, critical information that I present, prepare for everyone.
Thank you.
And keep in the, in the habit of giving you a report, a document so you can follow. I will just share, I have a few items I wanted to share with everyone. First and foremost, last Thursday, July seventh, I did attend the first meeting for the superintendent collaborative. And I just wanted to share with everyone, there's a partnership between Grand Canyon University, ADE, and Arizona School Administrators. We did have Superintendent Hoffman drop by to talk to us and just share with us how critical the work that we're doing right now, talking about just the challenge in education, not only with teachers, but with administrators, as far as just anywhere and everywhere. So just being very gracious and very professional with, you know, what we're doing and to make, to just do our jobs with pride and distinction and we're doing a service for the community. So it was very good to hear those words. I wanted to share with you just some other details. We are being assigned a superintendent mentor, which I think is great, happens to be the superintendent from Bowie. He and I worked as principals together in Tucson Unified School District many years ago. So he's in his second year, so that's good for me as far as a new superintendent. It's always good to bounce ideas off of other people, especially people who have done the job before.
Mm-hmm.
So this is my eighth day and so I still have a lot to learn. And so that's good to know. In that regard, the facilitator is a very recognized retired superintendent. He was a retired, he's a superintendent from Scottsdale Unified, Phoenix Union High School, Roosevelt Elementary, and Tempe Elementary School District. So it's good, I know every district is very unique and has diverse, diverse needs, but it's good to hear from someone who's been in situations that we might see, that we might not see, but just from someone who's kind of been that, down that road before, I can pick their brain about, you know, what about this? What do you think about this? It always helps because in the end, I want to do the best job possible for the district, which will translate into doing the best work for the students, families, and the school community, and also for you as, as the governing board. And so I wanted just to share that. September seventh to the ninth, we'll be in ASBA Law Conference. Mr. Hopkins will be attending that with me. I had asked if he would want to go. It'll be my first conference and the input that I received from other superintendents is, is the first conference you need to go to is a law conference and make sure your board president goes with you, just so that you can, you know, learn more about the dynamics, the law, legal perspectives are always changing, they're nonstop. So the next item is kind of an open invitation. We'll make sure to share this with Mr. Guthrie, Mr. Kurzweilich as well, the Arizona Rural Schools Conference, and I believe it's Flagstaff, actually, that's, that's my mistake. I believe it's Flagstaff. This is for any member interested in attending the conference with me. I wanted just to give that, leave that open for you to think about. Let me know by myself or Angelina by Friday, at the latest Monday, so it's at least two months in advance, we can start to make arrangements. So I want to try and just use this opportunity to go to different conferences and have just the invitation for, for different board members to take, you know, different, to have different board members go so we can get a chance, so everyone gets an opportunity to go to different, like, critical conferences. And this was one that was shared with me that make sure to go in your first year, the Rural Schools Conference, it's very critical, just to, once again, to talk with other superintendents in similar districts, similar demographics. September twenty-first, very excited about this. I had the chance to sit down with, for the International Day of Peace regarding AHO community and the diversity, also including all the other communities around AHO, with Liz Yon, the coordinator for International Day of Peace, and Mr. Aaron Cooper, the executive director for the International Sonoran Desert Alliance. That's a schedule that we came up with and, and I've shared this with Dr. Shebold and also the leadership team for, for the schools in, in the district, just so we can, for planning purposes, we can know in advance, two months ahead of time. From what I understand, the last time this was done was maybe twenty nineteen. So Mr. Cooper and Ms. Yon were real excited about just getting the chance to bring the community back together. There'll be multiple, I believe, from the reservation, I believe, also, in Lukeville. And so just trying to, a great way just to celebrate the diversity that, that is AHO. And so we're really excited and, and Mr. Cooper, as a matter of fact, gave me a book that talked about the history of AHO, the mines, and, and the Native American community and, and the Mexican-American community. So really fascinating just how everything, I believe, twenty-three hundred homes or twenty-three hundred members in the mine were in AHO at that time, at the height of, of the, of, of that time and the economy. So really excited and there are the, the list of what's going to be taking place and it's, it's on an early release, that's why I wanted to get this out to Dr. Shebold and the team as soon as possible for planning. The after-school festival, clean up and parade line, the parade will leave AHO School District arriving to the plaza, about three o'clock tonight, band and entertainment begin. So just a great chance to, you know, this is good to see again.
Do you think they're gonna not go till nine o'clock because there are marching bands and dance groups coming from Mexico?
Right.
That need to hit the border by eight to get back across?
Liz Yon made that. Right.
Because I know, I'm, I'm not going to be in town for them, I'm going to be bummed because I knew this is going to be a big one, having gone two years without it.
Sure.
Remembering what they were like before COVID.
Yeah, absolutely. So really excited about that and just really gave me a, a great opportunity to, to really connect and just really meet the people of the community, the history, there's a lot of history here. And so I really feel fortunate that I'm learning every day, the history of, of this great, this great town. The last point I wanted to share with everyone is we have a, currently, an AHO Unified School District renovation going on, just with our maintenance team, just talking with them, trying to just, you know, I have their Red Raider red, just some of the benches, garbage containers, some of the rails, as you might see out here, and just to try and promote school spirit, beautification for the students, families, staff, and especially the AHO School District community. I, I've met a, a number of people locally, but also when I was at a training in June in Avondale, I met a fellow administrator who graduated here.
Okay.
And she was talking to me about her family that had been here for many years and she just talked about how she remembers just the pride and the beautification. And so when she said that, I thought, you know what, why don't we try and do, you know, it's not the roof renovation repair project, but it's just a little something that when everyone comes on campus, the students, the families, the staff, they see just, oh wow, look at that, you know, it's, we've got some Red Raider red on campus and, and just a, any little thing to just really disconnect everyone and to really build those relationships into where we have that strong school spirit. So that's just a part of the renovation that we're doing. And that's, that's my report. Wanted to keep it brief, but at the same time, just keep everyone informed as much as possible of some of the things going on right now.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
And if you want to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I saw him.
I'll second it.
I have.
You have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question about it. Dr. Saltero?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things on the vouchers was fees paid for J-one users?
Sure.
Could you talk a little bit about those fees and I specifically, I'm interested in knowing if you, if the fees have been consistent since previous years?
Sure.
I asked you, I, I warned you that I was asking this question.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
And then, and then the other one was, oh, about the alarms.
Sure.
We paid something like ten or eleven thousand dollars for alarm repairs for the campus and I'm curious what the status is.
Sure. Well, first I'll talk to the alarm.
We, we did do a check of the alarm today and we had it during our jump start around maybe what, ten-thirty, eleven in the morning? And so we noticed that Wing One was not working. So I went out when, when the fire drill was taking place and I walked to Wing One with Mr. Yon, with the alarm on and the light, the light flashing as well. And also, I believe in the Dykeus Auditorium, it's, it's not working as, as effectively as it should. So I wanted to see firsthand exactly what, what is going on.
Mm-hmm.
And so I made sure to email our FSCEC Service Coordinator just regarding what happened today. We need your assistance. This is a very important situation as far as with campus safety and, and so we look to get that fixed as soon as possible. The J-one, I believe, the vouchers, right?
Mm-hmm.
From what I understand, and just, and just kind of, you know, doing some more research on, on the situation and, and talking with Ms. Angelina, from what I understand, it's the primary international agency for teachers. This is, if I understand correctly, we have that, we were going to cover, as you see it there, there's the, the amount for, for three thousand professional services.
We don't have it in front of us?
Oh.
But if you could, if you could tell us what it says?
Sure.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, sure. It has, the amount was three thousand, but what happened is that we were going to cover this teacher, but what Amity shared with us is that they wanted us to cover all teachers, not just one or two teachers. So from my understanding, that was, this took place, I believe, in June, June thirteenth, that this presented a, a financial challenge as far as if they wanted us to cover all the teachers, then it would be, I believe, if I understand correctly, it was nine teachers? Is that correct, Ms. Angelina, for the amount? And so we, we had to avoid that, if I understand correctly, from how this took place in June. And then just doing some more research on it, we currently have five teachers with Alliance, the International Agency of Alliance, they're all either second or third year, no new teachers. With Amity, we currently have nine teachers and, and those are the nine new teachers that are coming. We had it with Greenheart, but they withdrew from helping us. And when we found that out, Dr. Shebold, I believe when he was at an ASA conference, I believe, came across another agency that might be able to help us because the three teachers that we were expecting to be here right away, now because of this, through no control of their own, and, and Greenheart not working with us no more, if I understand correctly, we had to find another agency for them to work with, to come over. And also, I believe, we have, so we have the three new teachers that we had to help out because Greenheart was not going to help them out, will be here in September. So that's kind of a breakdown of, I know it's elaborating a little bit more from this actual voucher, this amount, but that's just a little bit more of the background of, of all the international teachers and, and how we really need help from these agencies. And so we were trying, this was, I believe, in June, right, Dr. Shebold?
Yeah.
And he came across the, that other agency.
Yes.
So this is really challenging, you know, and so that's kind of the background of, as regarding now, for the vouchers and what we have.
Thank you. And so the, I know it has been equalized because it.
From what I understand.
But it looks like it was about three thousand per, per teacher?
In, in this case, it was three thousand just for this teacher, if I understand that correctly, right? Because this took place June thirteenth, so it was three thousand just for this one teacher. And then, as far as I understand, it was voided. Is that correct?
That's what the, if you. I, yeah, I saw that. The brackets.
Yeah, it, that's negative.
So.
So, and the, the district is obviously paying that, so the, the teachers are not responsible for these fees at all? The district?
No, as far as I understand.
The teachers are responsible.
The practice?
They are responsible.
They are responsible for the fee. Even if we, a couple of years ago, we, we put the, the money upfront, they pay us back during their, their payroll.
Okay.
Okay.
They can say, we're going to take out, you know, two hundred dollars every paycheck or divide it up into twenty-six and they have to sign in the agreement before we are able to pay for their, because three thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah.
And that's not even counting their claim and, you know, housing and all of that stuff. That's just the fee.
Yeah.
So we've done that for other teachers, but I'm pretty kind of just.
So, so in, in conduct, when I say conducting the research, long story short, Angelina, Arsalia are the research, the department here. I mean, and so, and Ms. Smith and, and is here also, she's part of the research team. So that's pretty much what has been taking place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Okay. So we have a motion in second. On that, please, we're ready. Go down to consent agenda.
All right. Ms. Duncan, aye. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Next, item, business personnel. It's the certified resignation and liquidated damages for Angela Garcia. Angela Garcia, CTE, early childhood teacher, turned a letter of resignation to the district office on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. She is resigning from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The administration is recommending the approval of Ms. Garcia's resignation and the implementation of liquidated damages per line eleven of the certified contract she signed on March third of twenty-twenty-two. And I'll pass to you for the superintendent's recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Hopkins. I recommend it, I recommend approval of the resignation of Angela Garcia and the implementation of liquidated damages proportionately.
Okay.
So do we discuss now?
I think we need to do a motion in second before we can do a discussion.
Okay. So then I have a question. That part of it has changed.
Okay.
It, it looks like it's two votes now? Is that?
Yeah, the A and B.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Robertson, it's, it's, it's set up to where the first vote is, the first option for this, for, for the governing board is to accept, to approve or not approve the resignation, to accept the resignation. And then the second one is for the governing board to either assess liquidated damages proportionately or to decide to not approve, to assess liquidated damages proportionately. Yes, sir.
I believe you'd said in this, in this instance, liquidated damages would amount to about a thousand?
It, it stays there proportionally, but the governing board can, if they decide to make the decision, can have it proportionally either based on, on the forty, on, it was point four-three FTE. And I'm glad we have our, our business manager here just to make sure we figured out the right, the right amount. It can either be, you know, in proportion to that, or it can be an, an amount that, another amount that the governing board decide on and agree on. Or as it states there, the governing board can make, can not approve to assess liquidated damages proportionally.
Okay.
That's, that's your decision.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So I, I did the math and I should verify it, but for me, it came out to one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars in liquidated damages based on a point four-three.
Yeah, if you multiply.
Rate times four thousand.
Times point four-three, this ends up with the, I guess.
So, so seventeen thousand, seventeen hundred and twenty dollars.
How much?
One thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars would be the proportional amount as opposed to the one thousand that was discussed on Monday.
Okay. So, since it's just, since we split it like this, I'm not quite sure to do it. I know we need, my understanding, we need a motion and a vote before discussion.
The resignation.
So I can do the, I will make the motion to approve the resignation.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Now.
Okay. So I, I did get a copy of the contract and just for board information, employee contracts are public record, so we, we can request these any, anytime for our viewing. But particularly in this situation, I thought it was important that we read the contract, specifically the part on liquidated damages. And when I read it, I came to the conclusion that we can either approve her resignation or we can not approve her resignation and apply liquidated damages. But we can't both approve the resignation and apply the damages because the resi, the damages are based on job abandonment. And job abandonment is based on not approving the resignation. I have, I have, did you get copies?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so that's one of my concerns. If, if we approve the resignation, which maybe we choose to do, then I don't believe that we can apply the liquidated damages and remain in compliance with this contract. Now, the lawyer said, my understanding is that he thought that we probably could.
What, what he shared with me, Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Robertson, is that I asked this, does our contract allow us to implement liquidated damages after approving the resignation? He stated, yes, you can approve the resignation with the condition that the district will enforce liquidated damages and that's from that section eleven of the contract. That's what he shared with me. So I'm just sharing with you what was shared.
Yeah. And the explanation, I understood, was the part near the, the bottom third that says the teacher's signature, the teacher agrees that the contract constitutes authorization for the governing board to withhold all or any part of the damages from their paycheck. So to me, I interpret that as allowing us to take from their wages to pay these damages. That's different than allowing us to impose the damages in the first place. That's more about how we do it, how we get the money, not if we can charge the money. That seems to be at the top, which says the teacher agrees upon job abandonment that they can owe the district a sum of liquidated damages. And that's the only place it says, why? So if they are, if we're accepting her resignation.
Right.
We are not saying she's abandoned her job. So I don't see how we can both accept her resignation and charge her damages.
Right. I understand that. That, that's why, that's why we set it up the way it is to where you can, you can accept the resignation. From my understanding, speaking with Mr. Hopkins, you can accept the resignation and then you as a governing board, as it states there in section eleven, middle of it, the governing board may waive, okay? That's where we set up the two A and two B to where, you know, for point of clarity, that you as a governing board, you can accept the resignation and then you have one of those two options to where, where you have to decide, do you want to assess liquidated damages proportionately or to not assess liquidated damages proportionally? And this was made after, after speaking with Mr. Hopkins, to make sure that we had everything in order and, and as clear as possible for the board to make the decision on, on what you wanted to do.
Okay. One question I have about it, completely unrelated to that issue on it. We were talking Monday about it being about a thousand dollars.
Right.
And now it's substantially, it's higher than that.
Right.
Was the teacher ever told an amount? Because that to me had, I wouldn't like it if the teacher was told about a thousand dollars and then find out that it's close to twice that amount.
Governor Saltero?
Please.
Yes, the teacher was told a thousand dollars.
Okay.
I kept that from our business office and I was able to relay that to her. We were in discussion about would there be damages in a, when the number of thousands came to me, so that's what I passed.
Okay.
Yes, it would be quite a difference.
Yeah. And so that would seem, if we assess the damages, that would be something that we would add into the vote there of what that amount would be.
That's entirely in your discretion, yes, sir.
Okay.
So another one of my concerns with this is that in the three years that I've been here, this is only the second time that we've been asked either to impose liquidated damages or waive them. This is with many, many teachers leaving.
Okay.
And I, I do have a concern that we talk. And I, I do have a concern that, we talked about consistency. I have a concern that by imposing liquidated damages on her, we may not be applying it consistently. Just because of my experience on the board member, on the board, the only, the one other time we've imposed liquidated damages in the last three years that the board is aware of was for a teacher that left mid-year. There was no hope of, of replacing her and we had no subs. It was, it was really, we had nothing, we, we had, it was an extreme hardship, I would say. Much different than this. So in terms of being fair and administering it evenly, I, I'm, I'm not convinced that we are doing that. Can you convince me?
Well, I'm gonna add, definitely, I mean, I definitely see the need for consistency combined with the need to look at individual cases. So it also puzzled, I know that we had that, the teacher you mentioned that we assigned liquidated damages. We had another teacher leave in the same year, in the middle of the year, that I believe we didn't assign any liquidated damages to. And.
It wasn't offered to us.
It wasn't, yeah, so, but I'm, I'm just wondering, since it hasn't been consistent and we want it to be consistent, at what point do we start consistency?
Right now.
Because we've had, the last person, you know, we assessed damages to, it, to me seemed definitely mid-semester, mid-year, more than appropriate to assign them. And in a case like this where it's this close before the year.
Right.
Feels appropriate to me as well.
Right, you know, all I can speak to, Mr. Hopkins, I was, I can just speak to what, on my eighth day, what I have in front of me.
Yes, sir.
And hearing the different perspectives, I get it. It, it's critical both ways. Looking at this, just on what I have in front of me, we need teachers. We need teachers. And, and I just shared with you, the vouchers was a good segue, even though it wasn't meant to be a good segue. You heard the critical need, not just from myself, but more so from Dr. Schuboltz of how we have a challenging time, like any school district, but especially we have a challenging time. I believe sixty percent of our teachers are international. And look at what happened as far as we had three who were going to come here on time. And then we found out through no fault of anyone, the agency that was going to bring them over stopped the process. So my decision was based on, okay, what is our need right now? We, we need teachers in the classrooms. I, I get the concerns brought up also for consistency. That's why I wanted to leave the recommendation, how I added, to add proportionately. So it's not that four thousand dollar amount that is the only number on, on that section eleven. But maybe this can be used as an example going forward now, that we, we try and develop some kind of consistency, Ms. Duncan, Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Robinson, where we have something set in policy that how we want to handle this moving forward after today. But that decision is, is yours as far as if you want to impose liquidated damages proportionately or not, or make adjustments. I just wanted to share with you why.
Yes.
I had to put the recommendation on this because of, it's very challenging, and then Dr. Schuboltz can speak to this a lot better than I can. It's very challenging to find our teachers here to hear it off, and for them to stay with us retention. So that's just my perspective based on what I've seen in my time here.
Okay.
I don't know if Dr. Schuboltz you want to add.
All right, I agree. And our board knows how happens here. Something good, but you teach your three days. And I don't think any of it has to do with anything that, that, that we can really control. Since I've been here one year, the teachers that left, whether they were unhappy with the board, or, you know, it's, it's just a difference of occasion, as you said. But yeah, it's a killer when we have an employee go to another job, especially stay in town. Maintenance, or, that's probably, we'd be talking selfishly, but, but yeah, it's like, oh, there they go. Where, we do teach.
Okay, so we have a motion in second on the acceptance of the resignation. And we'll do a second vote on damages.
So if we accept the resignation, that means we can't assess liquidity damages?
No, we're accepting the resignation and then it's a second vote on whether or not we assess damages.
But is it legal to, if we?
It's, I understand Wendy's concerns.
Yes.
But I also, to me, I know Ben has been in school law for a long time, so.
I would do what Ben says.
And I finally got his first name right, so I'm proud of myself on that.
Specifically, just to, I want to make sure the board is clear. I want to make sure you have as, as much accurate information as possible. So that's why I asked him, can this be done? And, and he did say yes. So that's so that you have all the information. I want to make sure that you guys are also.
Yes.
Have everything.
I also believe that the lawyer reviews all the contracts.
Okay.
So that whole section was reviewed by him.
Right, I'm, my, my concern is not at all with the contract. It's with our process here.
That's why I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, the contract. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins, this is on accepting the resignation.
Yes, ma'am. Aye.
Ms. Duncan is aye. Ms. Robinson?
No.
Okay.
Two to one.
And then I would like to make the motion that we assess liquidated damages at the thousand dollar level that the teacher was informed, rather than the full seventeen hundred and twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Just out of a sense of fairness.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Duncan is aye. And Ms. Robinson?
No.
No. Again, it's two to one.
Okay. Next, item on the docket is certified employment of a teacher, Gina T. Lopez. Gina T. Lopez has been interviewed and reference checks completed for the position of teacher in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And I will pass it to you for superintendent recommendation.
Mr. Hopkins, Mr. President, I recommend the employment of Gina T. Lopez as a teacher for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Okay.
I make, I second, I make a motion, I guess.
I'll second it.
Ms. Duncan, aye. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Next item is the certified unemployment of teacher Dion Vega. Dion Vega has been interviewed and reference checks completed for the position of teacher for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Mr. President, Mr. Hopkins, I recommend the employment of Dion Vega as a teacher for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Okay, I will make the motion.
I'll second it. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan, aye. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Glad to have a culinary program back at the center. Next one is classified resignation of special project secretary Candace Moore. Candace Moore, the special project secretary, turned in a letter of resignation to the district on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Her last day of work will be August fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Hopkins, I recommend approval of the resignation of Candace Moore effective August fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Awesome.
I'll second it.
Ms. Duncan, aye. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye. Next item is the classified reassignment, special project secretary Debbie House. The administration has advertised in-house for the position of special education secretary. Debbie House, a paraprofessional, was interviewed for this position and is being recommended by a committee to become the AUSD special project secretary. This reassignment is a move from a part-time paraprofessional to a full-time twelve-month secretary. Her first day of her twelve months will be June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Hopkins, it is recommended that Ms. Debbie House's reassignment from paraprofessional to special project secretary be approved, sir.
I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan, aye. Pass three to zero.
The next item is the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three pre-K program staff pay increase and stipends. In twenty twenty-one, last year, Rana Cote, pre-K director, applied to the Department of, to the Arizona Department of Economic Security for Child Stabilization Grant to supplement the First Things First pre-K grant. The DES grant was approved and the district was able to ease budgets, the budget's contribution to the pre-K program. In the attached document at the top, the board can view how the grant was used in twenty twenty-one. This year, twenty twenty-two, Ms. Cote again reapplied for the DES Child Care Stabilization Grant. To our surprise, not only was AHO pre-K approved, but the grant was doubled. Ms. Cote made a proposal to the administration to use a portion of the funds for personnel items that need to be board approved. Those are increase in pay and benefits for pre-K staff, ten days of pre-K staff training, and retention stipends mid-year and end of year for pre-K staff.
Mr. Hopkins, before I make the recommendation, I wanted to turn to Mr. Laura Smith of the superintendent. Is there anything that you wanted to review with the, with the board?
Basically, I just want to reiterate that this is a, a childcare grant. And state has recognized that that is a very low-paying position. And this additional money, they specifically ask to be focused on these specific employees or their benefits or stipends, whatever we can justify without, you know, you can't cause problems either because we all have salaries scheduled. So this will be tied to this specific grant. And as I said, we're going to increase their pay when they return in August, close to what we believe that the minimum wage increase will be on January first, just a little bit less. So when January first comes around and they, they gain what that minimum wage is, they will also get any additional money. If there is additional money, we do have a few extra days for them so that they can get some training. We really want to focus on the quality of your program and it's an opportunity to improve it. So it's very exciting and it will also help our employees who have young children in this program because we're going to reduce the employee tuition. That's a way to help our employees deal with the economy the way it is. And it also will be self-sufficient in that they will also be paying for the food service for the workers and the students. These teachers don't get, or these classroom people don't get a break from the kids because you have to work. They get all the talks. And so getting, you're gonna eat with them, so here you go. It's nice that we can do that.
Go up in their mail because they'll put their juice in.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever. So it's, it's really exciting and I'm really pleased to see the district get this money. We don't know if it will be year over year. It's finance, so it's always a surprise. So we put in here that we're hoping to be able to carry forward fifteen percent like you can on a normal federal grant. And if that was so and it didn't get renewed, we would be able to help with the cost of the program the next year.
Mr. President, it is recommended that the board approve the increase of pay and benefits, additional days of training, and retention stipends to pre-K staff from the DES Child Care Grant.
I'll make the motion.
You'll second it?
Mr. Rob, Ms. Robinson, excuse me.
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan? Aye. Pass three to zero.
Yeah. Next, next item is personnel approval of jumpstart employment. Jumpstart for K through eighth grade students will be July eleventh through fourteenth and July eighteenth through twenty-first from one, from eight o'clock till one o'clock P M. Teachers will work six hours per day for eight days, paid for by Title I monies. Parapros will work five hours a day at their hourly rate of pay. The following staff members have expressed an interest in working during jumpstart. Well, as teachers, we have Worlda Quinell, Richard Rigadon, Art Maningo, Shelley Aaron Cohen, and April Caballero. As parapros, we have Maria Duran, Sherry Simpson, Bernadine Tomayo, and Debbie House for the first week only.
Mr. Hopkins, I, I recommend the hiring of the above teachers and paraprofessionals to work during elementary jumpstart from July eleventh to the fourteenth and July eighteenth to the twenty-first from eight A M. to one P M.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan, aye. Pass three to zero.
Next item, extra pay positions. The following employees have expressed a desire to perform the designated extra pay positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Mercy Aaron Cohen is the high school student council advisor. Doug Sane is the National Honor Society advisor. Danielle Connolly as yearbook sponsor. April Caballero as freshman class sponsor. Danielle Connolly as sophomore class advisor. Jose R. Yan as athletic director. Buddy Kuser as head football coach. Brian Bissel as assistant football coach. Jason Horton as assistant football coach. Kayla Leon as head volleyball coach. Griselda Nunez as assistant volleyball coach. Jennifer Guthrie as spirit line coach and Mandy Pickle as spirit line coach.
Mr. Hopkins, I, I did prepare for the board further request from Mr. Guthrie on Monday. It, it's relating to Board Action Item Eight Personnel A, Extra Pay Position. And, and so I have there prepared a job description and responsibilities for, for the board to see regarding the questions that came up. It lists there the athletic director, what they're responsible for, sports activities, programs, compliance with government rules and league policies, coordinating with coaches on team travel and practice sessions, mediating any disputes arising between coaching, student athletes, provide accommodations or direction facilities for visiting team referees and bookkeepers, overseeing the development of student athletes through coaching, training, and discipline, ensure students eligibility with morning grade checks, ensuring all coaches have inventory and return all equipment used for their sport, oversees all home and most away games. Athletic coordinator, responsible for the following, scheduling game times, dates for games, communicating with athletic directors, ensuring all, that all team members are aware of upcoming events, rule changes, and other information, coordinating travel arrangements for teams when they participate in competitions away from home in any case that the athletic director is unavailable, schedules rosters for teams based on input from coaches, administrators, and other staff members, accurate records of game results, attendance figures, other statistics, coordinating with facility staff to ensure that facilities are clean and safe to use, ensuring the students have turned in all required paperwork to participate in sports. The question was, who does the athletic director and athletic coordinator report to? The gentleman sitting to my right, Dr. Schuboltz, they both report to the principal. The qualifications of the athletic director and athletic coordinator, I have listed there, but also on, on the next page, I stated there for the athletic director, we have head coach baseball twelve years, coaching experience at Pima County Parks and Rec for all sports offered, take a coaching certification course, complete the required CAA, Kansas State Athletics Brain Book course, complete the NFHS First State Health and Safety Course, National Federation of State High Schools, complete the NFHS Protecting Students from Abuse, High School Graduate Fingerprint Parents Card from DPS. And those qualifications are also what the athletic coordinator has. In addition, the athletic coordinator's qualifications include spreadsheets in Excel for accountability, physicals, concussion testing, and other forms, vision software experience for purchasing and receiving sporting goods, game source, entering student information, examples, S A C info, date of birth, enrollment dates. And I want to highlight, that's very sensitive information. So it has to be someone who's very professional and, and has the, the appropriate training for that. Graduation year sports played, coordinated and managing dates of games played throughout the school year. And, and just on, just a personal note, I was thinking back to when, when I was a middle school assistant principal, I was the athletic director as well. And, and long story short, just all those things that I was reading brought back memories of having to go to the games, eligibility reports, physicals, paperwork, discipline, and supervision. And holy cow, I, I needed help. I, I did. I'm just going to be direct with you. That was over twenty years ago. But having to go to just the games, the supervision itself, you are out there and you are, you know, Dr. Schuboltz can attest to this, you're out there and there's. there and there's students from multiple schools and families and you're out there making sure everything is good. The eligibility is critical. Weekly eligibility checks, that's, that's a whole nother project by itself, right, Dr. Shabol? And so my point is, I have no problem saying this, I needed office assistance. I needed help. And so whether it was the attendance clerk or the office manager, they helped me. There was no way I could have done that by myself and done a good job. And so I did need help. So I just wanted to share this, this report. It was requested Monday. I wanted to be prompt and share it as soon as possible. And so that's just to address the, the questions that were brought up, sir, and Ms. Duncan and Ms. Robinson on Monday.
I feel that it should be continued to be tabled because Mr. Guthrie had strong feelings on this. And he, and I know he was upset about other things as well, but I think that we should at least hear him, and we didn't that night.
I have a question here about, when I get down to qualifications, the first two look like they are somebody's specific qualifications rather than qualifications required for the job?
Sure, sure. I just put the qualifications of what that, that person has just so that they can see their qualifications.
No, I was thinking, because I was thinking, I was thinking that, I was thinking that coaching experience was a required qualification for the director, but it's not for the coordinator. But you're saying that's, it's not a requirement, that's just one of Jose Yon's.
That's just based on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I was thinking that would make it a clear difference if it, if it was described as the director needs to have coaching experience, because I know Jose does, but the coordinator wouldn't necessarily need the coaching, from the way I was reading it. And really, from the way I'm reading the descriptions, coaching experience is not as critical for the coordinator since they're not as involved with that aspect of the... But I also, I was already kind of leaning that way too, since I knew Lonnie had questions. I was basically going to make a motion to approve all and table the athletic coordinator or director, but first, and I meant to ask the question Monday, I didn't get a chance to, will that have a negative impact on our teams?
Absolutely.
If we table the coordinator?
I'll comment too.
Okay.
Yes, scheduling is taking place right now and because we're not AIA, which we're just all the large schools and they just threw you the schedule, there's a lot of back and forth talk between school to school, which R.C. does, and Jose does, football practice, official practice, I believe, starts at the 20th.
Okay.
Athletic Association. So without an acting athletic director, as, as you can see, all the things that they're supposed to be doing, I don't know how that's going to.
Yeah. And I, well, I was going to add on to what I was saying, because I had thought too that we were going to have the athletic coordinator added to the list, and you had mentioned that that wasn't going to, when I asked you today about it, you had said no, but the funny thing is, I didn't realize R.C. had, I was for some reason thinking Venus was the athletic coordinator.
Okay, but she's not on here for, for tonight, so that's going to have, have to wait anyway. So my comment is, I actually, Lonnie called me and he said that he understood that tabling the vote would delay the start up of football for the kids, and he, so he said, go ahead and vote. That's what he said. He said he thinks we should just vote, not, not, not.
That's nice of him, but I do know that he was very upset.
Yeah, and he feels very strongly about it.
And he has strong opinions.
And it's because he's thinking of the kids. He wants them to get started, so he said, go ahead and vote on it. He doesn't want to delay it.
And at this point, we're just voting on the director, not the coordinator.
Sure.
His question was on, do we need two people? So at this point, we're just voting to approve.
Sure.
The first ones. Okay.
Question, question. So I had the same question as you about the qualifications. And I appreciate you bringing this all together. It's really helpful and also your just personal insight. As a previous director, it's, it's good to know. These job descriptions, are they posted or published anywhere? Do we have a place that we do that?
We were, on Monday, we were saying that these ones are generally advertised in-house because you want somebody with teaching experience and coaching experience to do it, and also because there are so many education-related laws that tie into it.
Okay.
If you're on, coaching the football team and you have a student who can't play because his grades tanked.
Right.
You can't say that because that's FERPO. You're violating, you can just say, no, the student's not playing right now.
From what I understand, if I, if I understand your question correctly, we have an internal posting, and then if we don't get enough candidates, we then have a, a AHO website, Facebook, also in the Copper News, we even have it on the marquee, so.
So I'm speaking more to the description, not the job itself. So, so when we post it, whether it's, whether it's in-house or on the website.
Sure.
Does it include the job description so people who, so applicants can, can know?
I would refer to Dr. Shabol's and our, and our district pseudo historian, so to speak, the practices been in, in past circumstances.
I have all the job descriptions, oh, frankly, we used to have on first guard, like a rerun of the big binder with job descriptions that went all the way back to like 1930s or whatever. And for some reason, when everything got packed up in a client stopper that were outside in the parking lot when they were leaving the office, there were three or four boxes that were blocked. And one of them was the job description. So like in 2016 or 2017, we had to start from scratch and make up job match, make up job descriptions as we go, but as far as we needed them, we had to recreate them because the binder was blocked along with a bunch of other stuff that we couldn't get back. So I have this electronic file of, of job descriptions, and if anybody comes in and says, hey, what's the job description for this or that, I think I have 25 or 26, some of that aren't even, you know, current anymore. And anybody can request a job description, just like it's a public records thing. So.
Sure.
And normally, when, when I post everything to everybody, I'll get one or two teachers that'll say, hey, what's the job description for NHS for the club or for the sports or for whatever, and I can just email it to them or they can put them in the chat to them.
Okay.
We used to have the big binder posted because if I, if I posted this, it's huge, and if I posted all the job descriptions with it, it, everybody would get 14 different, you know, PPS or whatever.
Right. No, I was thinking more with the listing. Like, if it's on the website, for example, you click on the, on the job posting.
Does it connect to a link with the description?
Right. Does the description come, come up? It sounds like no, but if they're interested, they could come in and ask for it.
Right, because I've never posted the A.D. position. It's always been an employee. It's always been a previous employee, always been a staff employee. When I started, it was Mr. Farmer, who was an A.T. teacher. Then it was Ms. Keel, who was a, a middle school teacher. Mr. English, who was a religious plan. And it ended up being Mr. Guthrie, who was a football coach at the time. And then it fell into, we didn't have athletics. And then Jose had spent the last three or four years. So it's always been a staff employee because we need to say something between first aid, grades that affect our faculty's grades, and that's not stuff we can just put out there. Medical information when it gets physical.
If I can, Mr. Hopkins, I just, what I've listened to Ms. Angelina and Dr. Shabol say, just going back to my experience too, in that role as athletic director. If you're asking me, do we need to have someone right now, just on my experience, absolutely. Holy cow, because you need someone to start the scheduling, you need someone to start just, someone that the coaches can go to.
Yes.
That way, they're not going to be going to him all the time, and he's trying to get D and curriculum adoptions and everything and school safety in order, but it's just such a critical role. I'm thinking back to that July, August, when I was athletic director, I was already with the year-long plan of like a fall season, winter season, eligibility criteria, contact information. I think it's very critical. That's just my perspective.
That's what I assumed, but I wanted to get the question asked too, just to, for clarification. You kind of tickled that Angelina had job descriptions back to the 30s, because I want to see the 1930 IT job description. What was the IT job like back then? Pencil sharpening. Okay, so based on that and based on also what Wendy had said after her conversation with Lonnie, I will make the motion to approve this as is.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Duncan. And so it passed two to one.
Now, we're on to business items. First item is the approval and adoption of the proposed financial fiscal year 2023 budget. Arizona revised statutes 15-905.A requires governing board of a school district to prepare and furnish to the superintendent of public construction and county superintendent's office an adopted budget by July 15th of each year. Ms. Smith will go over the 2023 budget during the budget hearing, which we did. How did I skip that? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. No, no, you're right. I'll go back and hit that. Yes. Approval of additional hours for sped director Shelley Aaroncon due to unforeseen circumstances, Mr. Anthony Delara and Mr. Roger Patlinog, our two new sped teachers, won't arrive until late August or September. In addition, the sped secretary's last day will be the 5th of August. Ms. Aaroncon needs additional hours not set out in her contract to get the special education department ready for the new year. The administration is requesting Shelley work from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. from July 11th through 21st and full days the week of the 25th through the 29th. Note, her contract starts on August 22nd, or August 2nd, 2023.
Mr. President, I recommend the approval of the additional work time for Shelley Aaroncon half-days from July 11th to 21st and one week of full days from July 25th to 29th, sir.
Okay, and I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Duncan. Aye. Pass three to two.
Now, just a second. I'm not going to read that again, but I'll read the heading, Approval and Adoption of the Proposed Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. And I'll go straight to superintendent recommendations since I already read the description.
Mr. President, I recommend the approval of the adopted budget for the 2023 fiscal year, sir.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Business number one.
That's, I didn't get anything for Kelly.
Oh, okay.
So I marked this one instead.
Well, it was actually the last thing on, on personnel was the one for Shelley.
No, I don't have it. Only goes to eight.
Okay.
It didn't get in. I don't know why. Okay. And you?
I made the motion and Ms. Robinson, second it.
Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
And Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
And Mrs. Duncan. Aye. Pass three to zero.
Next item is the approval of disposal of library books. Donnell Connolly has weeded the school library and is seeking board permission to discard 307 library books. These books are recommended for disposal based upon lack of circulation and condition. And despite Mr. Guthrie's ask, I'm not going to read all the titles. And I'll pass that to you, sir.
Mr. President, I recommend the attached list of books be approved for disposal, sir.
Okay.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Ms. Duncan. Aye. Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Pass three to zero.
And next item is the approval of intergovernmental agreement with the Vail Unified School District and Beyond Textbooks. Due to the closure of school and online learning, the AHO Unified School District Leadership Team is seeking a way to increase student achievement and align classroom instructions to state standards. The leadership team and a committee of teachers met with a representative from Beyond Textbooks about implementing the program at AHO schools.
Mr. President, I just wanted to just briefly give a little bit of background, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shabol. The IGA is, we had Mr. Harper look at it, also ran it by Ms. Smith, just to make sure with procurement practices, we were, we were all on the same page. Assessment and staff development in the IGA, AUSD curriculum materials, high-quality students, teachers, year-two Beyond Textbook, refresh, research, and enrich. Faculty orientation, supervision, Vail Beyond Textbook will provide instruction calendars, curriculum documents, assessments, instructional resources, curriculum calendars, a sequence which teachers really love to have, a scope and sequence. At the same time, it was a very valuable training for Beyond Textbooks, sharing with us the data, growth points. Teachers control the how of teaching, that really stood out when, when the president shared that with us, Mr. Edwards, teachers control the how of teaching. And that's so important for our teachers to feel that way. Another great informational piece, all resources, either are PC files for Microsoft Word, Mac files, PDF files, Google files. It's just, it's right there. Incredible sample lesson plans. If you want a eighth grade teaching argumentative writing, click on it, you have it, this is how it is. All that Dr. Shabol talks more about.
All right, so I think besides the district hiring me, this is probably one of the more important things. So it's just so important, and right now's an ideal time to bring something like this in with, it's, there's, there's actually around 14 new teachers, nine from, from other countries, but, but all together, we have 14 to 15. We had a team come together to meet with the, the presentation with Beyond Textbooks, two new teachers to our district that each have over 20 years' experience, and Ms. Shelley was there, Ms. Aaroncon, Ms. Casey, who both are still teaching, myself and Dr. Saltero. I think that's, I think that's it, to listen to the presentation. And the biggest piece of this, we can all, all of us can, yes.
Sorry, question, you said Ms. Shelley and you said Ms. Aaroncon. Two people or one person?
Good call. So, so one of the, you know, any of us right now can go online and find lesson plans. That's as easy as can be. We can do that, and I could follow that lesson plan and say, oh, boy, you know, I taught double-digit mathematics today, addition today, did a great job, I have that. But, but is it aligned to our standards? Does it have anything to do with what's going to be assessed? Is it what, is it what my neighbor teacher's doing or the year before me, the vertical articulation? Is it, is it all aligned? Probably not, because it's a guess. This takes the guesswork out of it. There's a, there's a weekly map, and it's aligned to our district's map. So here's the standards that I need to hit this week, and, and then, and then to move on to the next week and the next week. Here they are. And then it narrows, narrows down. You can have, you can draw lessons from, from Beyond Textbooks. They are vetted, they're Arizona-taught, and they're aligned with the newest Arizona state standards. So what you drop, what you want, if you, if you choose to, look at a lesson, take bits and pieces for it, it's all aligned. It's what's supposed to be taught. It takes the guesswork out of it. If I'm coming from another state or another country, I don't have time to align everything I do with state standards. We as a district don't have time for that. We have to be here all summer with huge, with big teams, like some large districts are able to do once in a while, but it's, but we're just, you know, rural districts just can't do that. So this is a lot, this is already aligned for us. It gives you, it gives you a, a starting point, an endpoint, it has the assessments in between. Obviously, I'm really excited about it because I did sub a lot last year, and we have millions of dollars in supplements, which you're going to in any district year after all these years of human, but if you don't know how to use those, you don't know where to draw from, and as I said, you're brand new, whether it's your first year, first year in, in AHO, there's no time for that. It's just very confusing. This is going to be, this is, this is going to be aligned for you. And I'm able to go in and say, let's see, where, where are we today? Does that match where we're supposed to be? Because a lot of teachers say, well, they just have a master to get, so I'm doing it again. Well, three weeks of double D, we've got to move on. We can't. So this is that, that map just lets you know, lets you know that you have to move on. It also includes intervention, tier one, two, and three interventions of what to do with those students that, that aren't quite getting it, and, and what to do with the ones that got it like that and they need the enrichment. So it covers all those bases, and, and as Dr. Saltero said, it's, it's been proven to work. There are tons of, a lot of districts in the state of Arizona and other, and other states that have used it and shown increases. There are some that it didn't pan out, and again, that, that comes back to, once the teachers in the classroom, they, they can basically do what, what they end up deciding to do. And so if that's. And so if that's not monitored and you're not giving them coaching and, and, and the guidance to make sure you're following something that's, that's there and proven, then that falls back on the school. So this would be pieces of the science of teaching and each teacher has that part of teaching, the way they're gonna do it and the way they're gonna present it. And, um, I do know districts and, and, um, people at districts that have used it and I, I learned about it around ten years ago. Um, and I, I'm just really excited that it's gonna be a great start, such a, such a great tool for our new teachers. And some that have taught for a while and may just, uh, get a little, you know, a bit tired of what's, what they're looking at and not sure, they need the guidance, like we all do in life at certain times. This brings everybody together on the same page. And it will help align with our professional development. Um, you know, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there, but this is a map that tells us where we need to go. We can follow it.
And it's a map that's created and reviewed by peers within the state of teaching.
Over and over.
Yep.
So it's not a curriculum, it's a resource.
It's, um.
For planning, it's a planning resource.
And it depends on what, what we would, uh, define curriculum as. Um, it's curriculum calendars, it's, uh, it's, it's resources.
Like a framework?
Yeah, a framework is a way to describe it, curriculum framework.
Okay.
But it's not, no, it's not buying a set of textbooks from Hooten Mifflin from pre K to twelve. That's what we're thinking, yes. And page by page, there you go.
Okay.
And, um, how much is it going to cost us?
Oh, actually, I doubt. Um, the first year, it's gonna be eighteen thousand, maybe around seventy-five dollars plus ten dollars per student. The second year, it's twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty, and thereon, it's ten bucks.
The first, if you don't mind, the first year, um, the implementation process includes multiple professional developments by, um, Beyond Textbooks, where they come to you. And, and they, and they do that as well. And then there's, you know, I've heard it one time with presentation, but that's, that's the understanding that I get for that first, for the first year.
They have, they have, they have also like, they have a leadership retreat, part one. Uh, they have a leadership retreat, part two. They have a Beyond Textbooks one-on-one training, a Beyond Textbooks one-on-two training, uh, professional learning communities training. So it's also like, it's not just, here's a framework, do it. We're gonna come and train you and model for you how it's supposed to work. We're also gonna, you, your teacher leaders, come over to, if I understand correctly right now, Dr. Schubert, as far as they're gonna provide some, some PD also for, for us as well, right?
I've seen them when they train, they, they actually have their teachers come train, the trainer, teacher to teacher. So I think that's ideal.
I'm assuming that training would be on a Wednesday, early release, cause we do staff development those days anyways, so.
Okay. Can we afford it?
Yes.
Okay.
We can't afford it. We can't, we can't not afford it.
Yeah.
You know, it's like anything else, it's a priority, but educationally, this is a recipe for us to, to succeed.
Well, what's, what's also, just looking at it, just the reality perspective, there's, I believe, eighteen schools, more or less, I think, in Vail, fourteen or fifteen or eight schools, I don't know. So it's a good model just to kind of pick the brain of another district to, okay, you guys are having success.
Yep.
Just kind of share with us, okay, we're having success too, but how can we even have more success and what are some of the things you're doing? Just, uh, it's a good collaboration.
And there's nothing that prevents teachers from building their own lessons, lesson plans based on these frameworks. They still have that freedom.
You said the what, the what, the how of teaching is a good teacher.
Yeah.
We can use our textbooks, the old textbooks that we have that.
Exactly.
Okay.
And Vail's like two and a half hours away, so it's not like if they do this, PD, I will keep doing a big job.
So I will make the motion to, to.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mrs. Duncan, aye. Pass three to zero.
Now, I'm actually gonna turn back to the front page and make sure I don't go to the future agenda items early like I do here as the other weeks.
It gets a little sick.
Put my glasses on so I can actually see. Okay, we are at that point. So the next item is agenda item to add agenda items by board members. Does any board member have an item they would like added to the next agenda?
Go ahead.
I was gonna, I, the one I would, um, I would just like some sort of quick update on how the partnership with the Grad Solutions, with the Agenuity folks is coming on.
We ran into a roadblock.
Okay.
We can't talk about it.
That's what I was thinking for next, for next agenda. Oh, no, I was meaning that, I wasn't meaning it as a direct question, it was more to add an agenda for the next meeting to just get a, a review on it there. Sorry about that. And you have one as well?
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I have several, um, I'll, I'll email, these don't necessarily all have to happen at the next board meeting, um, and I will, I will email you. Dr. Taro and Angelina, I'll email you with them. But items I'm interested in addressing are, um, the fingerprinting and background checks. Um, I'd like to know about the legal requirements of them. Um, and then what, I understand we have, we have to have a tracking system now. I like to just, just learn about that, what, what that is, how it works. Um, next, uh, review of twenty-one, twenty-two student data. I'm presuming we have like testing, testing results back at this point, um, and the board hasn't seen them, so I would love to have that. Um, district emergency plan, drill, drill plan. Um, and review contract specific, not, not, not the contracts so much, but, um, look at our, our policy and procedure regarding liquidated damages.
Sure.
That's all.
That's funny.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before the last item, which is the very last item. I just wanted to share with, with everyone, um, I, I really like to look on YouTube of motivational speakers and just some of the things that they've done. And I just wanted to share a brief quote and then I'll be done. Um, you don't have to be great when you get started, but you have to get started to be great. That's from Les Brown, motivational speaker for over thirty years, to McDonald's corporations and other leaders in, in, in society, whether it be TD Jakes or other organizations. And I, I heard that a few days ago, I thought, I'm gonna share that with the board. You don't have to be great when you get started, but you have to get started to be great. Let's get started, let's have a great year, and I think we're off to a great start. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you.